Good evening and welcome to the Murray City Planning Commission. Today is Thursday, February 17, 2022. Want to introduce the, and I apologize, we're starting at 6:34 PM. Want to introduce the, the members of the commission that are present. We have Commissioner Michael, Michael Richards. We have Commissioner Ned Hackett, Commissioner, Commissioner Maren Patterson, Commissioner Lisa Milkovich, Commissioner Pearson, and I'm Jeremy Lowry. Commissioner Jake Pearson, I'm Jeremy Lowry. We'd like to ask all that have cell phones to either put, to please place them on mute. If you need to take a phone call, please do it in the hallway as to not disturb the, the, the meeting. From there, we all want to make a, make an, one quick announcement of our agenda. Agenda number five, item number five, Salt Lake Analytical Therapy was withdrawn on February 11th and will not be considered at this time. The format that, oh, back up. The meeting is being recorded and is available for, for public viewing as well. Really quickly, just as a, as a matter of courtesy and, and, and to, to lay out what we'll be doing. When we get to the, when we get to the point where we'll be presenting agenda items in the, on the, below the business items, the conditional use permits and the subdivision review and the land use tax ordinance, the format that we'll follow, the staff will do a presentation, which will be followed by the, the, the applicant. At that, at which time, after they've, after they've done, the, the, the public will be able to make comment. We asked the public at that time to speak to the podium over on the, on the north wall. Speak directly to the microphone. You may not be able to hear yourself project over the, over the microphone. However, it will allow us to, allow those that are, that are watching on TV or watching afterwards to be able to hear your voice. Direct your comments to the chair and the commission, not to the audience. We'll ask you to please state your name and your address. And we'll ask you to, to limit your time to, to approximately three minutes. If you're representing a group, we allow, we allow for five minutes. I will ask the commi, the commission if there's any conflicts of interest that they have with any of the applicants that are being presented to this, this evening?
No.
No.
Very good. We have, we have reviewed the, 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 the minutes of the previous meeting, subject to a couple of very small, one, one spelling and a couple, and a couple of, a couple of grammatical errors. And, and I believe that such as those changes, we're, we're ready to make a motion on those. Is there someone who can make a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that the commission approve the planning commission meeting minutes from Thursday, February 3rd, 2022, with the minor corrections that we addressed in our pre-meeting.
Thank you. There's a motion by Commissioner Hacker. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Great. With that, we have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting held on Thursday, February 3rd at 6:30, 2022 at 6:30. We'll do a, we'll do a vote. Jared, do you want to do the vote for us? It's okay. I'll do it then, never mind.
We can just say all in favor.
Okay, all in favor. There you go. I'll, sorry, voice, all in favor?
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sounds like there aren't. Beyond that, we have our findings of fact that we have reviewed. Is there, is, is there a motion to approve the findings of fact for Murray Square Commercial Center LLC and Clean Star Intermountain?
Cheryl make a motion that the planning commission approve the findings of fact and conclusions for the project Murray Square Commercial Center LLC and Clean Star Intermountain.
Thank you. We have a motion by, by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second?
All second.
Very well, all in favor?
Aye.
Hey, appears unanimous. With that, we'll move to our, to our agenda items. The first is a conditional use permit for M-Town Elite Auto Services. And Susan is presenting for, for the city.
Thank you. This application is for M-Town Auto Elite Services at 4656 South Cherry Street in unit number three. Property is on the west side of Cherry Street. It's in our AMG manufacturing zone. It's 0.6 acres. On the property is a big, large warehouse building on the north end, and there is a non-conforming dwelling centrally located on the property. And there's a picture of the zoning. He would like to go into unit number three. There are two units that are, that would be occupied for this structure. He would be in unit number three, and there is auto repair in number four. The remainder of the building would be used for personal auto, excuse me, personal storage of the resident that lives there. And I believe that is also Mr. Parcell, same as the applicant. He currently does auto detailing mainly from, for other dealerships that bring the vehicles there, or he brings them there and details them and then returns them to the dealership. Some he will do for himself. He would like to sell a few vehicles at this site. He would get the vehicles from, off of the auto auction or other places and probably only have about two to three at a time. And the, here's a couple of photos of the pictures of the property. This is from Cherry Street. You can see the large warehouse building there. And then the bottom photo is the park strip area. Actually, that's probably, that is, I believe, the property line goes right behind the, actually, right about here. See that? Probably about halfway between the curb and gutter and this fence, I think is right where the property line is. Is that right? And then this is a photo of just the interior of the property where the warehouses are. His unit is number three, the one that has the open door on the left picture. And then the other unit that is occupied also by the auto repair. So he is, he would be limited to probably two to three vehicles total, unless he could have some of them inside the unit based on the parking that's available. I'm going to go back to that. I didn't talk that much. So the parking that is available, there are two to three stalls adjacent to Cherry Street. They are parallel stalls, angled stalls. So those would work because they would still be able to back out and pull out into Cherry Street in a forward motion. And then there are two stalls adjacent to the, well, actually, it's kind of adjacent to the residence there that he would also have. And then there are four stalls closer to Cherry Street, as indicated on the map there. That's probably where he would need to have an ADA stall striped and signage on there. All of the striping, all of the parking would need to be restriped. There's really not much striping there, so that would need to be redone on the property. He also would need to install, excuse me, the landscaping as required per code. And in your staff report, I believe it does call for three trees, five five gallon shrubs and 10 one gallon shrubs. And those would need to be planted prior to issuance of a business license, along with restriping the parking stalls. And based on that, staff has recommended approval and based on the findings that auto sales are allowed in the AMG zone with conditional use approval, with the conditions outlined in the staff report and meeting the standards of our land use code, and that the proposed use is not contrary to the goals and objectives to Murray City and in this area, this area is all industrial uses. So we are recommending that the planning commission approve conditional use for the auto sales at 4656 South Cherry Street in unit three, subject to the six conditions outlined there. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Can I ask a question? Just for my clarification. So there's currently a detailing business in the facility, and he's wanting to add sales.
Correct.
And the detailing business is licensed?
I believe it is, yes. And then he wanted to add to that license, the auto sale. So he, yeah, that has been approved, the auto, for the detailing, yes.
That helps me understand because I just read the application where he was asking for a detailing business. I didn't understand why, but I understand now.
Yeah, but the detailing is a permitted use, so he's allowed to have that.
So, once he restripes his eight parking spots, he will only be able to park cars in those eight parking spots?
It, yes.
Between sales and customer parking?
Yes, he would be limited for a max, based on the parking that's available. He would only be able to have a maximum of three display vehicles, unless he has them on the, in, inside the unit itself.
So, does the parking that is being restripped need to be designated for customer? Or he, or, I mean, display? Or he can just decide between those stalls where to park, display cars and customer parking?
Yeah, he could decide, preferably as staff. I prefer that he would do the angled parking just because it's a little bit, not as easy to get in and out of for customers. And the ones up front that are the 90 degree are much more convenient for customers, so.
But it doesn't have to be.
You could designate that as a condition if you would like, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That makes, I have a question then. Because the property is a personal residence and a business, do we need to designate between the two? Or, I, I asked that question because as my personal residence, I could park my car anywhere I want within the law, not my front yard, but you know, anywhere I want within the parking area. But that might restrict parking from customers. So how do you differentiate? Is there need to?
Well, potentially, yeah, that would be the case. But there is enough parking right adjacent to this. This map does not, is not the best to show that. But there are parking adjacent to the home. I believe it's in between the home and the back, isn't it? And the, the west side? Oh, yes, right over here. That's, well, you'll need to come to the microphone and make those comments there. But, so maybe I ought to turn that over to Sam if that's okay.
Great. Unless there's any questions for staff, we'll invite Mr. Parcell to come and, and make a presentation. Welcome.
Good evening. So, besides what the parking is being shown, there's also a, a complete horseshoe driveway that goes around there, two actual gates to the property. So, oop. Oh, I can do that. Yeah, look at me. All right. So, see the, the large pine tree? That's actually, and then it goes, there's a concrete area right there where it says 4656. That actually circles back around and comes back out. So that's also can be used as personal parking as well. Plus, if you look at the property and you can see the trees next to it, it looks like there's a building in the back. All of that is open too. You can park cars there as well. And that's really where I park my personal cars.
Is there any else you'd like to, any hints to the commission?
I do have a question. So I have another business with Murray, and I've done the tree thing before where I've put the trees and the shrubs and everything, and they die. So I was asking if I could put them behind the fence where my watering system can actually get to them? And is that cool? I mean, that might, this property's been in my family for years. I mean, we moved in there in late 60s and passed on from my mom to me. Anyway, we have big trees there anyway, and so the watering system actually gets them really good. But every time I put them out front and put the shrubs and everything, spend like 600 bucks and trees and stuff, and they die. So, and get them behind the property, that'd be awesome.
Susan, do you want me to comment to that?
That would actually work as long as he has the same number. And, because it's still technically in the frontage. So that would qualify. You just have to have the appropriate number of shrubs and trees.
That sounds great.
Yeah.
I have two comments. One, I don't think, did I miss it? But I don't think our applicant stated his name for the record.
My apologies. Yes, please say your name and address.
That would be Toby Blake Parcell at 4656 South Cherry Street.
Thank you very much.
And that's for the minutes, so we make sure we credit you for what you said.
Absolutely.
And then my second question was about the, the landscaping and the frontage. Do we have any further instruction on the frontage? I mean, if we're not clear, he could put them up against his house, along the front of the house. So then we might.
I'd like to put them on along the fence line, which is actually on the outside.
Yeah. Can I just make a clarification for you? So our, our code actually says in the front, in, in the front yard setback requirement, that would be the first 10 feet of your property line. So anywhere in that first 10 feet is going to be okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Well, as long as a small wiener dog has a long running around in there, I think we'll be fine.
That sounds good. Susan, would you be willing to, to advance the slides to the portion where it shows the conclusion recommendation and the conditions?
Great.
Are there any other comments or questions from Mr., from Mr. Parcell? Great. Mr. Parcell, have you reviewed, have you reviewed the conditions under which this would be approved?
Yes, I have.
The six, and can you comply with them?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, is there any more discussion amongst the commission about this application? We'll open it for a motion then.
I think we need public comment.
Oh, sorry, my apologies. Yes, you, it's a lot easier when you're not, when you're, when you're not seeing this chair. Are there any, are there any, any, we've, we've submitted requests for public comment, have not received any to this point, but we'd like to open it to public comment at this point. Seeing none, I will open it to a motion.
Do we still have an online option? No one's really been using it?
Yeah. All right. With that, I'll open for a motion, if there is one.
I'll make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit for auto sales at the property address 4656 South Cherry Street, unit number three, subject to the six conditions.
Great, is there a second?
I'll second.
Wonderful. We have a motion from, excuse me, we have a motion from Commissioner Patterson, the second by Commissioner Pearson, to approve the conditional use permit for auto sales business at the property address 4656 South Cherry Street, unit number three. And with that, we'll, we'll, we'll take, take, take a vote.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
I have to say, are you guys doing this for me? Because when I was chair, I was all over the place, and I appreciate others making mistakes tonight.
All right, well, I.
Thank you.
I, I hope it gets better. We'll, we'll see with time, usually with practice. But Mr. Parcell, thank you for coming here today, and we really appreciate you doing that and wish you well with your new endeavor. Thank you very much. Take care. All right, well, moving on, we are going to move on to agenda number six, which is the Waterstone subdivision. This is being presented by, by Zach, Zach Smallwood. And with that, we'll turn the time over to Zach.
Well, I want to ask.
Is actually the applicant here?
He's not here. He usually comes in late. So it's up to the commission if you guys want to maybe take on agenda item number seven first, and then we'll come back and see if he shows up. Or if you want me to just go on with the application as is.
I just wonder if there's members from the public that are here for?
If, if it's possible, we do have a few members of the public here. Are there anyone, if, if there's interest in the public here for number seven, which is the Waterstone subdivision, if you raise your hand and you're, you plan to comment on that, it would be great. Otherwise, if you're here to comment on a number, the land use tax ordinance amendment number seven, please raise your hand. Or if you're just here to watch, that's great too.
So it's up to the commission, however you want to approach that. I can, I can go through the presentation, or we can move on to seven and come back. It's up to you guys.
Do you want to move on, or do you guys want to?
I'm, again, I appreciate you guys making me feel good. I run late sometimes. If we can accommodate, I would appreciate that. Okay.
Well, with that, then I would propose that we'll, we'll move to, to, to item number seven. Okay. So with that, we'll, we'll, we'll table number six for later in the meeting and move to number seven, which is a land use tax ordinance amendment, which amends, is proposing amendments to, to section 17 dot 144 dot 020 and 17 dot 144 dot 030, and Jared Hall is presenting.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you all tonight about this series of proposed amendments. And I'll be, I'll try to keep this as short and sweet as possible so you can ask any questions. We didn't have a lot of time for questions in the pre-meeting. So with that, there are amendments that staff is proposing to section 17, 144, 020 and 3030, which are the permitted and conditional use lists in the general office zone and land use ordinance. The general office zone is applied in several different areas of the city. You can see a few of them along here, along 45th South, a little note up here where Van Winkle hits the 4800 South. Some areas down around the 53rd South interchange with the freeway and along Winchester Street and around the hospital, et cetera, and a few other little nodes throughout the city. You can see that even better here in that way. So everything that's shown there in blue is the general office zone. So it's not a widely used zone, but we do have little smatterings of it left. I should point out that this area right here that's in the general office zone is slated to go to professional office, which is a slightly more intense kind of office zone. The general office zone is a more kind of suburban, smaller scale, lower heights, et cetera, zone for office. And it's mostly developed in the city. Most of these offices that we have in the city are built out. They're properties that were developed in the 60s, 70s, 80s, and some newer ones. They have a lot of things in common. They're usually one or two stories. Sometimes they're three stories, some even four stories, but mostly one and two stories. Mostly surface parking. In very few instances, there's some parking decks or structured parking, but largely lots of quiet landscaping, big parking lots, and generally older, older building stock. We have been over the years as planning staff approached by several people wanting to bring different uses into those, into buildings in those zones. We've not been able to accommodate them, and the commission's reviewed a few requests for things like barbering and beauty services, salons in general office zoning, and not been able to approve them without going through a conditional use process. So tonight, what we're proposing is that we do kind of three main things. We're proposing that we move a couple of conditional uses to the permitted use list. And these are all mostly in the service category. So if you're doing it in an office, basically, the zone wants to let you do it. And it has a lot of other allied uses too, but we want to kind of increase that ability or those, that increase those uses, increase those lists of uses so that there's more opportunity for these landowners to get different tenants in. And we don't see a lot of harm in these uses. Moving a couple from conditional to permitted, that would be beauty and barbering and portrait photography. We also want to add some permitted uses that are currently just not listed anywhere in, in conditional or, or they're conditional, sorry, but that are just not listed at all, commercial photography. And these would be added to permitted uses. Shoe repair, Reiki, which is similar in form, in function and use to massage therapy, which is already on the permitted use list. Life coaching and consulting, and some different advertising. Like, there's lots of advertising that is permitted, office only, but direct mail, for some reason years ago, was singled out as not being allowed with even an office. I don't know what their offenses were, but I don't see any problems with that kind of use going forward. And watch and jewelry repair. And then we wanted to add a few to the, to the conditional use that just are not listed right now either. And these would be, these would still come, these uses would be not permitted, but conditional. They'd come to the count, to the commission for a review before they're allowed a business license. Dry cleaning services, body art and tattoo services and studios, locksmiths and cameras and musical instrument repair. So small, small items, but there could be issues with, that you'd want to review as a commission with signage or with hours of operation, et cetera, because this general office zone, as you can see, sometimes is adjacent to residential areas. It does have a lot of buffering requirements in it that would be built in. And so additions to buildings and things would, would all be reviewed that way anyway. But even uses can be reviewed for hours of operation, intensity, things like that. So we do have those three kind of main changes that we're proposing. We're basing that on the findings that we feel like the, the general plan supports these kind of uses going into the general office zone. And again, as it says in your staff report, the purpose of the general office zone is to provide a variety of uses. And we feel like increasing that variety will help these tenants find places, A, but also these landlords find tenants for their properties and reinvest in their properties and keep them, keep them up better, et cetera. So we want to give them every opportunity to do that. So with those findings that you see there, we are recommending that you recommend approval or forward a recommendation of approval to the council for these proposed amendments.
Okay, what questions are there for staff?
I'm happy to answer.
Mr. Hall, could you go back three slides for me?
Can I what?
Go back three slides?
That one?
One forward.
Got it.
That one. Where was, so I'm talking about item number three, where you're adding to the conditional use?
Yes.
Where was dry cleaning, body art, locksmith, cameras prior?
Not on the lists for conditional or permitted uses. So the way we do the use lists, if it's not listed, if it's in a category, a broad category like personal services, the 6300s, if, if there are specific 6300 uses listed, like, for example, I didn't use the numbers there, but Reiki is use number 6297 in the personal services. Since there are other 6200 uses listed and Reiki's 6297 is specifically not listed, we have to assume that it's not allowed. So if we want to allow it, we have to add it in. So it's not on a list of prohibitions, but it's not specifically shown, so we have to add it in. That make sense? So where it was, was nowhere prior to this.
In regard to dry cleaning, would it be wise to specify? I, I will, I should ask, would you envision dry cleaning plants being allowed in office? Or is this just the retail?
This would just be the retail and service.
Would it be wise to specify that?
I don't have a category that's different. I only have, I have dry cleaning services and I have dry cleaning facilities, and those are the only categories that I have. So I would assume then that if it's a larger operation, we would say that was prohibited because I don't have a category for it. So this would just be front-end service, drop-off pickup.
Understood.
Do we need to clarify that?
You'd clarify it in the conditional use review, that that's, that what's being allowed is the drop-off service and pickup service. And I guess that most of the time I've seen dry cleaning services, they are fairly small in operation. I'm not accustomed to seeing the big giant plants, but I'm not sure what that would be.
So you're saying we would clarify it when someone came in with a conditional use, request for a conditional use permit, right?
We, we would be, we would probably be front-ending that as staff too. So if someone came in and said, this is, this is prompt cleaners, it's a fairly small operation. We need, we can, we can run our operation front-end out of this building. And, and frankly, some of these office, sorry, let me go back one. Some of these offices are not going to be set up for that. They're not going to have the industrial uses. If it's a bigger operation, they're not going to have the space for it or to be able to accommodate it for power or for sewer. Well, the parking and drive-through might be a problem for them too. You may not get anybody that wants to do it. But if you have a really small shop that wants to run pickup and drop-off service only out of an office, I would want to let them do that in the, in the basement, or want to maybe a newer unit like this. But they're not going to be set up typically for sewer for this. They're not anticipating the kinds of traps and things they're going to need for sewer. If they were willing to put that in and the space accommodated, then we would want to accommodate that and allow it, I think as staff anyway, to, to make a good viable tenant user and maybe make the whole office nicer for folks. But it's the kind of thing that you do need to review, and that's how that dry cleaning lands on the conditional use list still, instead of just on a permitted use list. So we have somewhere to go with them and say, we have these concerns. We're going to have to go to the planning commission, and you're going to really have to think about whether this really works here or not.
Understood. Any other questions from the commission? Thank you, Jared. I think with that, we'll open the, the public comment period. Actually, but first of all, have we had any written or emailed comments?
Well, no, we had, we had some email information from a gentleman named Donnell, who was looking at Body Art Studios in the Geozone and was part of the impetus for this coming forward at this time. But his comments weren't in relation to the, the application. They were statements about his kind of business. He's here tonight, he could speak if he wanted during public comments.
With that, we'll open it up for a public comment. Please remember to state your name and your address, and we welcome, we welcome your comments.
My name is Donnell Benjamin. Thank you for listening to me here. Again, like he said, I did start this off with Body Art Studios. The big word there is Body Art Studios. There is tattoo parlors, but like I have explained to individuals like Zach and them before, tattoo parlors don't like me. The reason why is because I'm trying to implement change. If you walk right outside of this building, you'll look to your right, you'll see a huge tattoo studio sign going up and down State Street. You see these huge signs. I do not run a tattoo parlor or on a body art studio. I have high-end clients anywhere from the NBA to high-end celebrities. My location I have now is on 565 East 4500 South. So what I'm asking for is something I've already done, and I've been in the works for past four years. I first did this in Mill Creek, where I changed, and we have a body art studio inside an actual professional building. It allows us to not have signage, which I hate. There should not be signage outside. There should not be bright lights. There should not be these actual big banners. There should not be anything that indicates what's going on in that such because it invites youth or people that shouldn't be going into these buildings to walk in. So when you have locations, like I've said, like you have here on State Street where it says tattoo, this, that, and the other, I don't want that. What I'm proposing not only to Murray, and I've done in Mill Creek, and I'm going to go statewide, is we need to move forward with body art studios. The bigger reason why is because four years ago, when I went, went ahead and started this, is there's some things that I found out. Utah controls the body art industry, but we don't recognize that. Bottles, aftercare, medical products, a lot of that is actually made here. Then we send them out to other states, and they send them back to us and they chart us. And the bigger thing is in the body art industry, I found out that the artists here in Utah, we set the standard. When we go outside of Utah and we go to these big conventions internationally, and they hear they were from here, they want to question us because we're setting the standard of the quality of actual tattoo. We're setting the standard of what artwork's going out, what's new, what should be used, what shouldn't be used. We're setting standards, and the bigger thing that I found out is not being from Utah, Utah's proud. So I watch artists, as I've grown in this industry for the past 15 years, not being from Utah, Utah's proud. So I watch artists as I've grown in this industry for the past fifteen years. We can walk into anywhere and people want to come talk to us. So we need to represent that in the actual studios that we have. So when they come here and they don't see that relate to, well, we listen to everything you guys are saying, but when we come to Utah, we don't see that. Well, the reason I found out is because there's no communication. There's no one like me coming to speak with you and say, I want more stringent rules. So when they said, we're going to move into these buildings that they were showing before and I don't know how to touch this and move this, so I'm not going to do it. But when that happens, it should be rules. If you want a tattoo parlor and you want to be like these parlors around the street, go ahead and do that. But we want to represent it where, no, I don't want a big sign. I want my private clients coming in. I want hours. We need to shut down at a certain time. There shouldn't be any invite for people just to walk in off the street and just randomly get tattoos. It should be regulated. And if you come in and you say, hey, I want up in a body art studio, it should already be rules. It says, these are the things that you have to do to have that. If you want to be in this type of building, that's what I want. I want to be able to be allowed into the building and the building I'm looking at is at eighty, eighty, wait, eight fifty-five East, forty-eight hundred South. I want that building because you cannot walk, you will not be able to walk by him and know we're there. If you go to my building right now, no one knows we're there. Unfortunately, there is a sign outside that was requested, but I don't want to like the sign. I'm trying to get rid of the sign and luckily they're tearing down the building and I found this new building. And like they were saying, I was going to, over the past four years to building owners. And I kept asking them, why do you only have twenty percent occupancy? Why can't my type of business be in there? And their first thing is you have to go talk to the city. So when I went to my industry and said, let's go talk to the city, I found too many individuals that wanted to stand on their soapbox and be like, well, we want to stay this way. Unfortunately, Utah's changing way fast right now. So if we want to be relevant, let's go talk to you guys. Let's tell them what we need, what we want. Let's put rules on there and let's change. Or just leave, go somewhere else. There's other places you can go at this point in time and do that, but we want to stay ahead of the curve. So I have to come ask. Can I move something that I've already proven works? I have fourteen artists. I have the largest shop in Utah at this point in time. I have five thousand square feet. It's, you wouldn't even walk in, you don't see anything that has to do with tattooing. You walk in, it feels like a spa. Most people, when they walk in there, feel like they're lost. I'm here to get body work. It's private. You have to book an actual appointment beforehand. These are the things that we need to be doing. And where I say tattoo industry out here doesn't like that because I think what's sitting on State Street that you drive by, I think it needs to go away. We need to be in more professional locations if we want to be relevant. Sure. So appreciate you listening to me master reason why I brought it up in.
We appreciate your comments. Do you mind, I believe you mentioned your address, but you, you stated, we used to state your address for the record as well?
My current address for my business is five sixty-five East, forty-five hundred South, which is right on the border of Murray. The new business would be at eight fifty-five East, forty-eight hundred South.
Great. Are there any questions? Great. We appreciate your input and look forward to, to a potential application in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? Okay, to get back for any, any comments or, or discussion amongst the, the commission?
Can I just ask clarification? The Body Art and Tattoo Studios, that, that encompasses all tattoo type of places, right?
We're, we're not, we're not actually in this application proposing to break them out as different, as different items. It's just that in the geos and, and for several reasons, because the conditional use permit would be required in the geo-zone. It's actually required in the CD zone as well. But in the CD zone, you're going to find no restrictions on hours of operation. You're going to find no restrictions on signage. You're going to find a lot more restrictions on signage and hours of operation in the geo-zone.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, I think we can entertain a motion if there is one.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the proposed tech amendments to section seventeen point one four four point zero two zero and seventeen point one four four point zero three zero as reviewed in the staff report.
Wonderful. And a, a motion is made. Is there a second?
A second.
Great. We have a, a motion made by Commissioner Hacker and a, a second by Commissioner Milkevich for an approval to be, to be forwarded to the city council for the proposed text amendments to sections seventeen dot one four four dot zero two zero and seventeen dot one four four dot zero three zero as reviewed in the staff report.
Jared? Thanks. I'm up here because I don't have a microphone where I'm sitting. Mr. Hacker?
Yes.
Ms. Milkevich?
Yes.
Mr. Pearson?
Yes.
Ms. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
And Mr. Lowry?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Can I make a short comment? I just want to thank the applicant for coming. It's always nice to be informed where industries within our community are going. It's nice.
Yeah, look forward to seeing you soon. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, we're going to go back to to item number six, which is the Waterstone subdivision. Is the applicant present? Welcome. Thank you. With that, we'll turn the time over to, to Zachary Smallwood, who has a presentation.
Yeah, thank you so much, commissioners. This is a request from Garbet Homes for, to obtain a conditional use permit for a planned unit development and preliminary subdivision approval for the properties addressed sixty-five sixty-six, sixty-five sixty-two and sixty-five fifty-six, South Jefferson Street. You'll remember recently that we, or that you as the commission and the city council voted to rezone this property to the R-one-six zone, which allows for a minimum of six thousand square foot lots. This property is approximately two point six eight acres. If you take the twenty percent out for the road on, on that and get the, the total square footage, which is about ninety-nine thousand or so and divide that by six thousand, you get fifteen point five units that, that are allowed. So we would round that up to sixteen potentially in, in this, in this project. So here is the potential layout that Mr. Ballstet and with Garbet Homes has proposed. So you can see that they are proposing fifteen lots along a cul-de-sac here. The, the planned unit development allows for a, allows for reduced setbacks in, in, in the zones. So for example, they are proposing for the front yard, typically it's twenty feet in the R-one-six. They are proposing to reduce that by five feet to fifteen feet. I will point out though, that all of the driveways are at least twenty feet away from the, or I'm sorry, the garages are all twenty feet from, from the homes or from the, I am just stumbling over words today. It's the curse of Ms. Milkevich, I guess, right?
I was going to thank you again.
So the garages are twenty feet from the, the property line. So they have about, so it's really just the homes that are going to be facing in that fifteen feet. The rear yards, they're requesting also a reduction of five feet from twenty-five feet to twenty. No changes to the interior side yards of five feet and actually they are, they, the, the houses themselves will actually be closer to eight feet. It, it'll be the window wells that'll be within those five feet, within that five foot thing because currently because of public utility easements on Platts, they wouldn't be able to get window wells in those public utility easements in that five feet. So they've actually narrowed the houses a little bit. So they actually will seem a little bit further separated than, than the actual five feet there. Then also corner lights, corner yard side setback, which this is really the only house with a corner is, is requesting a reduction from twenty to fifteen as well. No changes in height requirements and then the lot width goes from ranges between forty-one feet and sixty-three feet. So staff doesn't see any concerns there. One thing I wanted to clarify on the fencing section in your report, it states that the applicant has proposed a new six-foot vinyl fence along the entire the, the southwest and north perimeters. And that actually was a mistake that was left over from a previous report. So we recycle these reports a lot of times. So that was my mistake. In front of you is the current, or what was, is in your plans. It is the fencing plan. They propose to keep the existing chain link fence to the north, which is facing that detention basin along the south. They will continue to use the existing vinyl fence that's located that bear, that's to the property owners to the south. And then everything in blue will be new. So there will be a proposed six-foot vinyl fence along those, along this area here and here. And then there will be a six feet, a six-foot concrete wall along that west side to, to provide that buffer away from the tracks, the tracks rail lines. So let's see. As was mentioned in the staff review, pre-meeting, the, the right of way is forty-two feet. Typically we require forty-nine, but they're allowed to, engineering is allowed to kind of work with them and take out the the park strips to allow for greater flexibility, especially in these planned unit developments. So we do feel that the, let's go through here. So as part of a planned unit development, the planning commission reviews the elevations and, and materials for, for these projects. So it's a mix. So for example, there will be, I think fifteen different home types that they can choose from. I'm not saying that this leaves for a little bit more opportunity for the person that's purchasing the home to choose the type of home they want to see. So you can see in front of you now, there are three different types of, of house plan. So you can see like the contemporary shed or the eastern contemporary or the contemporary gable, but they all don't do that. Okay. So they all have the same floor plan though. So they can, they can have a different look on the outside, but the floor plan stays the same. So you might see, I don't know, three of the contemporary shed in this, in this area or whatever. So whoever wants to choose whatever they want. So so then that's the floor plan for that, that product type. These are two stories and you can see the three different options there as well. And then the floor plan here, so it's showing that, you know, a basement and then your first and second floor there. And then a third type, which has, is also a two-story product and also has basement with two floors above it as well. So this is kind of a busy slide and I apologize in advance, but this is all the color combinations that you can choose. So each column is a different color product, I guess you could say. Yeah, color package you could, you could say. So like, for example, this bottom one here are, are like your front door colors. So these are the, you know, the different floor colors you could choose. These are all the different shingle colors that are attached to these different palettes, things like that. So as you can see that everything of the six different options, they don't vary so significantly, but still allow kind of those muted tones and not like bright in your face, beat you up like some things in Daybreak do. So, which I don't mind. I like Daybreak. So staff, for the findings with conditions in the proposed development, we believe that it meets the standards of the subdivision ordinance, title sixteen. The proposed lots with the development standards for properties found in the Murray City Land Use Ordinance is in harmony with the purposes of the R-one-six zone. And the proposed subdivision is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the general plan. Also, I'd like to call out, I didn't put it in the findings in your report, but also it meets the standards or, or the, the intent of the fashion place West Small Area Plan on, on providing that infill housing and providing for smaller lots in that area as well, closer to tracks. So with that, staff is recommending that the planning commission approve a conditional use permit for the planned unit development and grant preliminary subdivision approval for the Waterstone subdivision at the addresses here, subject to the ten conditions. Also, I totally missed a whole part I wanted to talk about. And I didn't even put it in the slides. I apologize. So we'll talk about it real quick, just this section here, which is the proposed open space. I, I was mentioned in the, in the staff report that the applicant wanted to have a discussion with you as the commission to decide what you wanted to see in that area. Staff doesn't believe that it fits for just being used as a, as a detention base, retention basin to be qualified as an open space area. That's something that we would like to see activated in some way. So the applicant will be, will want to talk with the commission about that. Also, let me see. Also, we had requested and the applicant was willing to require that one tree be put in to the front yard area to help provide that street tree feeling, since we're not going to have those park strips that will have, typically have street trees in them. So I've asked that those be required in, in, in there as well to still provide the street trees that, you know, Murray's known for having street trees and things like that. So we would like to see that continued through, through the front lawn area and that would be reflected in a final subdivision review as well. So with that, now I'm done.
All right.
Questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Great.
It's a little bit, oh wait, no, actually I'm going to wait and ask applicant.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff?
Pretend questions for staff.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Zach. Appreciate your, your report. With that, we will invite the applicant to step forward. Please state your name and your address in the phone, into the, into the microphone, into the phone. We're used to that and excited to hear, hear from you.
Oh, great. I get to use this little pad too?
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Jacob Ballstet. I'm with Garbet Homes. Address is two seventy-three Northeast Capitol Street. Happy to be here. Excuse my tardiness. Planning commissions are never early, so I'm sorry for being late, but I appreciate Zach and Susan's and staff's help in getting this to, to this point and I appreciate Zach's presentation. So there's some history on this project. We just recently became involved in it. I know there was another applicant that tried to get something done here. Something that was, I don't know if I understand it terribly well. It was more dense, a little unique type of design and things of that nature. And so I, I don't even know if they even got it before the planning commission. They didn't. So I think they gave up and, and offered it to us. So given our experience in the city, we thought, they thought we'd be a good match and we're happy to be back here again. So we're, as Zach explained, we're requesting a PUD for this site. It's, it has some unique features. It's an assemblage property, meaning. I'm just going to pull up one of the site plans for you. Okay. So it actually consists of three separate properties that have been acquired at very, at, at some point to try to make this project happen. And the reason, part of the reason why we're asking for the planned unit development is there's some constraints on the site that make it difficult to develop without it. The standard street section requires forty-nine feet. This is, has the same, same amount of asphalt and curb and gutter and such, but it just eliminates the park strip in exchange for a wider sidewalk. Part of the reason, really there's a couple of constraints that really make this site difficult. And really it's the entrance. If you notice in this, I'm used to having a pointer, but I don't have a pointer. So oh, okay. So this area is, is really the constraint. If you get the wide, the road any wider, it really becomes an issue and be able to actually put houses along these front two lots. Right now, as it is, it's pretty tight. It has a, a very shallow buildable area. And so there are just a couple of constraints. And as you get back into this cul-de-sac, the cul-de-sac becomes difficult as well. Specifically, some of these two-story lots, these are actually some of our more shallow homes. You can tell this garage is twenty feet deep. The living space in the back is maybe twelve or fifteen. It's hard to make, get a living space area any shallower than that. And we're still right up close to the twenty-foot rear setback. So, and you can see it again on this, this other side as well. There's just some, there's some, there's some areas where there's pinch points that make it really difficult to do a standard subdivision. On the other hand, most of lots are quite generous. They're deep. We're not near the rear setback. We have extra space in the side setback. We intentionally design our homes so that the, the living space of the home is forward of the garage. That's why the front setback is only fifteen feet. And as Zach explained, it's really just the living space is fifteen feet. The drive, the garage door is still twenty feet back. So you have ample room for parking on the, on the driveway. So I think I just wanted to give a little background and history of, of why we're requesting what we are. Zach brought up a good point and staff mentioned to me some discussion about this open space. This property is kind of unique because right the neighbor of the north is this huge detention basin. And we need, we need a And we need to, we need to maintain some of our water and the area where we can do it is fairly limited because of the way the roads work and the way and how we have to be able to have the utilities work, so the detention basin is pretty locate is pretty limited to where it can be and where we why we place it where it is is it has to do with engineering. But there's some good wide, there's some access here from the streets so that kids can come in and use it. We have a pretty simple landscape plan that was included in the package. It does dip down kind of like a bowl, so it can capture water. But we're happy to look at alternative, look at to further enhance that area. We can certainly put in a swing set, some things that could activate it for kids' use or other things as well, so we're happy to discuss that. I think in general the project is a good project, I think it feels good, I think that there's ample space and I think it'll enhance enhance what's happening there on Jefferson Street. You know, this ad sidewalk along Jefferson Street, which is kind of, I know it's a goal of Murray City. You drive down Jefferson now, there's not really sidewalk anywhere, except for the neighborhood of the south. So this will this will help tie tie into that and help improve the street and help jumpstart some redevelopment in that neighborhood, so. I think that's really the conclusion of my brief presentation.
Great, we appreciate it.
I'm happy answering questions, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So I'll ask the question. So one of the required conditions for us to approve this is the open space.
Yeah.
And I I appreciate that you want to get some feedback from us. I I read through this again, just so I could understand exactly what the requirement here is and it says that it needs to be for conservation or recreation purposes.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, I don't know if as a commission, we should be brainstorming what that idea is for you. I mean, I could come up with some ideas.
Sure.
Throw some benches.
Yeah.
A pathway, I don't know, but I think we need to have something and we have to have it, it needs to be specific.
Yeah.
And we have to have it be specific today. And so that's what I think what we're missing here to approve this.
Even to add to a little bit, I might be a little bit concerned about access or accessibility, appearance of accessibility to the community, because it might look like a drainage pond squeezed between my house and the neighbor's house and not maybe like a park I should go visit.
Yeah.
I think definitely a pathway would be great from the road that was clearly a pathway that people feel like they could walk on, but I think just a you know, a drainage pond is not conservation and it's not recreation.
Yeah, okay. The packet included a landscape plan that had some details shown in this, I'm not sure if it's not in this little presentation, but maybe you had received it in your packet, so you can see there was some thought put into it, it's when we made the application, when staff discussed activating the space and making it more usable. So I I I think their comment was well is well received by us and we're willing to look at that. Maybe what I would recommend as a count as a planning commission is it's something that we can evaluate as a as a condition of approval that when we come back for final, we can activate the space, do some improvements, make it more functional and work with staff to make something that would work. I I think, I actually think we're not far off from I think what you're intending and I think if you saw the landscape plan we proposed, you would see that. And there's other things we can do to improve it as well.
So so can someone from staff speak to that, because I think in our pre-planning meeting, we were told that we would not be able to do what
Well, what I'm proposing.
Jared, you want to take that?
I'm on, I'm on like half duty these days anyway, so I might as well earn my keep. I I think you can, I think you can do that, you can condition, you can condition the preliminary approval on something coming back, showing you some kind of of plan that works for you and if it doesn't work for you when it comes back for final, then you table final and say bring it back, because we don't like what we're seeing. But your, the the conditional use permit is tied to this as well, I think that was really the question is can we give a conditional use permit that allows the preliminary PUD to go forward and not have the specificity? But I think the condition of the, we we have conditional use permits issued all the time that don't have quite that level of specificity, I think you're within your rights to do that. And if I can make just one suggestion, just looking at it and knowing something about the previous plan that didn't that didn't make it to you. There were, there were things about that that weren't gonna be, that weren't gonna work for code, et cetera, in the end. But one thing that they they had noted, and I think Jacob knows this as well and mentioned that detention area, there's a large regional detention area in here and in the new parks master plan, it points out that that could in the future be amenitized a little bit or made a little more publicly available, right now it's getting used in the traditional edge of the suburbs way, kind of like where I grew up, kids use it anyway, even though it's not supposed to be used, that's where you play frisbee and where you run around with your dog and where you sled and et cetera. And that's great, one day that might be a little more formalized and that that day has to wait until it's not carrying so much regional water, I'm I'm not up on all of the the timing of that, but the the Parks Master Plan has identified it as a future not park, but more amenitized park-ish space and it would be great that if if this common open space in this subdivision is inviting and welcoming and and looks like, as you mentioned, looks like a place where you can from this area walk through. It would be great if in the future, the the open space plant here allowed for that connection in the future, so that you could go through right from there into that larger space. Then that that can't happen right now, we can't bring people into that space right now, but as long as the plan preserves that, I think that's a good point to make too.
I appreciate you sharing that with us, because I feel like I I realize what I'm gonna say is not, it's gonna get booed down. But I still feel a little bit, I don't know, I love using retention areas for recreational, I think it's a smart use of the land, it's dual-purpose, it's good, but I feel a little cheated when it's tucked in a corner that's hard for your kids to access and you can't see what they're doing. So it it seems to me if you're going to develop a recreational area, it should be easily accessible by the neighborhood, not tucked between two houses in the back.
Yeah, I know that, I I don't think that gets booed down, I think that's probably a a common occurrence and it does happen, it's kind of leftover, I think Jacob alluded to this, well, didn't allude to it, he said it directly. This is, they're gonna be bringing in a lot of fill to make this project work in the back, correct? If I'm if I'm missing out, tell me wrong, but I think it was one of the problems we had with the previous development too, it's a lot of fill. This is the spot where they can do retention and under current Utah code, they have to do retention on this project, because it's redevelopment. So there has to be some retention there, they need to put it somewhere and this is the low spot, so.
It works for retention, it's maybe some of you'd make a little less money and also put the recreation area somewhere, because the retention area is inaccessible.
And if the retention, the good part is that it's not a ton of retention that has to be done and so it doesn't have to be, you're not seeing I think you're looking at it, are you looking at a contour line there, is that like one foot down? It's not a, it's not a steep, it's not like a four levels down kind of deal, it's not a big bowl, it's kind of a shallow little bowl, so it would be easy enough to put swing sets or something in there and then have that pass through for the future, that would be a pretty good amenity, because it provides not just a little amenity for the project itself, but the ability to get directly from that project right into the bigger open space when that comes and it'll be.
Would that be something we suggest then, that now developing the pathway or an access to potential future?
I I would, if I were on the commission, I would.
All right.
I'm not the commission, but I I would, that's just my suggestion.
So Jared, could you? I'm putting it on the spot here, but could you maybe recommend how we would attach this as a condition that they come back with that? One of the conditions is that they bring back a and
I think it is a condition, condition number six says applicant shall work with planning division to provide elements in the open space areas to activate the space to be more usable by the residents. So I think you could add on to that condition if you wanted to say include a path or include access to the other thing, you could amend that condition, but also I feel pretty comfortable that it says they'll be coming back to us and they need to work with staff about how they're gonna activate it, so I
Okay.
I think the condition kind of covers that.
Yeah, and I apologize, in in the pre-meeting, it was it was just a miscommunication. If you were going to require something of him, like a path, for example, then that needs to be specific. Yeah, then you would need to be specific.
And you could amend that condition or would you need to make another?
You could amend that condition to say that, however, if you were going to just, if you wanted him to after the discussion with that you guys have, you know, that you guys have already had with him a little bit and you're still confident that he can move forward with doing something that you feel that he has, that he's that your intent is clear with the applicant, that he can work with us to activate that space and we would make sure that it's activated before bringing it back to the commission.
Makes sense, that makes sense, I I think that I'm you know, I don't want to dictate necessarily what he has to do or not do, as long as I feel like it meets the requirements, it's kind of what I
Yep, perfect.
Are there other questions for the applicant?
There are.
All right, come up, come on back up.
Uh well, well, I guess it's for the applicant, I think it's for the applicant, it might be for us, let's see what we say. The tracks to the west.
Yeah.
Uh currently a six-foot fence.
Yeah.
Is that because that's all we require, that's all we allow you to do, would you consider an eight-foot fence because of the traffic back there or talk to me about that?
Yeah, I would consider it's an eight-foot one, I don't know if they're allowed, but I would consider it, sure, yeah. I'm not opposed to that at all, there's benefit, there's value there, sure. Some cities don't allow eight-foot fences, so we just proposed a six, but we're happy with an eight.
Okay, so then maybe we can discuss that.
Great. Are there other questions for the applicant? Okay, well, thank you for coming, I do want to, and and obviously we are, we need to have public comment and whatnot, but at this point, have you reviewed the packet and you've reviewed the conditions? And if approved, subject to some changes, you'd be willing to, you'd be able to meet those?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, at this point, we'll open to public comment. Zach, have we received any public comment that has come in electronically? Great. Okay, we'll open to public comment at this point, if there is any. Okay. Seeing none, I'll take it back to the commission for discussion.
What are, what's your thought about that fence line along the tracks?
I think if it's not, if it's an allowed use, would we need to specify it?
Yeah, you don't have, unless you want to condition that he must do an eight-foot fence, that's up to you, but because of the way our fence code reads along the long the fence along the the tracks line, he can build eight feet just by his own accord, so it's up to you whether you want to force the eight feet or just allow him to do it if he decides he wants to do it.
And I appreciate when we have discussions, because I could maybe argue both ways, the bigger wall we put, the more room for graffiti. And and as a resident on the other side of that wall, I might prefer something a little higher to buffer the noise, so what?
I like the eight-foot fence, personally, our homeowner.
I would support an eight-foot fence.
I'm fine either way.
I think I am leaning toward an eight-foot fence, you have an opinion?
No.
All right. So.
Okay, any other discussion? With that, we'll entertain a motion if there is one.
Hold on a second, do we need to put it in the conditions?
If you would like to, if you'd like to make a motion and put in the conditions, you may.
And and do we want to amend number six?
I don't think we, I don't think we need to. I don't, I don't know, I guess we could discuss, but I think yeah, I think I'm fine with number six.
Okay, then I have a question real quick, if we're recommending an eight-foot fence or putting in the conditions for an eight-foot fence along the west end of the property, west end, are we specifying what kind of fence or requesting a solid fence or does it?
I think, yeah, say masonry.
Yeah.
Masonry or just solid, because this could be masonry?
I would, yeah, I'd say comparable to what was what was presented.
Okay, oh gosh, okay. So what, and I'm just gonna say masonry, because that's what was presented, okay. All right.
Is there a motion then? Potentially adding a a a condition number eleven, it sounds like.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I make a motion?
Please.
I'd like to move that the planning commission approve a conditional use permit for the planned unit development and grant preliminary subdivision approval for the Waterstone subdivision on the property's address sixty-five six-six, sixty-five sixty-two, sixty-five fifty-six, South Jefferson Street with the ten discussed conditions and adding an eleventh condition of an eight-foot masonry fence along the west side of the property.
Is there a second?
A second.
Very good, we have a, we have a motion made by Commissioner Milkovich and a second by Commissioner Patterson. Do the planning commission approve a conditional use permit for planned unit, planned unit development and grant preliminary subdivision approval for the Waterstone subdivision on the property's address sixty-five sixty-six, sixty-five sixty-two and sixty-five fifty-six, South Jefferson Street, subject to the ten conditions which are found in staff report and with the addition of an eleventh condition, adding an eight-foot masonry fence to the to the 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 west side of the of the of this of the PUD. Zach, will you, will you call a vote for us?
Yep, Commissioner Milkovich.
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Richard.
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker.
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
And Chair Lowry.
Yes.
Perfect.
Okay, very good, well, Mr. Ballston, thank you for coming, we certainly wish you well with your project and we'll see you, we'll see you again. So thank you very much. With that, I'd ask if there is any further business before the commission? Okay, I think we can entertain a motion to adjourn at seven forty.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
All right, very good, thank you.